There he is.
There he is.
He must know the time to walk in.
Bring your donuts. Brown and Brian.
No doubt.
The November 16th, 2021 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensho.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on our zoning agenda is docket number 2021-052 for the property located at 1560 Walvash Avenue. Petitioner is Seven Carpenters LLC. Present zoning classification is B2, General Business Services District, Section 155.034. Requested zoning relief reclassification into Business One, Highway Business Services District, Section 133.033. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to accept the petition as filed?
Second.
The move and second to accept the petition as filed. Any discussion? All those who favor the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the item passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-053 for the property located at 128 Maple Grove Lane. Petitioner is James B. and Agnes Wood. Present zoning classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief variance of Section 155.001, definitions pertaining to accessory buildings to allow the existing detached garage to have a water connection for a toilet and sink. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approve the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Second.
The move and second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval of the petition as submitted and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-054 for the property located at 405 East Lake Shore Drive. Petitioner is Sangamon Surf Club. Present zoning classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 9 regarding docks of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to extend the dock to 165 feet as measured from the shoreline at the point known as the normal pool elevation instead of 100 feet allowed. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approve the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation with one caveat. The next ordinance is also about adding additional floating docks to another club. We want to make sure that when these are installed, the CWLP goes out and make sure that we're lined up perfectly on the property lines because there's going to be other clubs that are going to make a petition to the City Council to bring those types of things. And we got to, I just asked General Manager Brown to make sure our people are watching that. And I know that there's no conflict because I know the guys at Sangmon Surf and the Anchor and the Blue Ridge and the Elks, and that's where they're all coming from. So this is, this is an addition to try to help their membership.
Second.
The move and second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation.
Question.
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
Just for my information, do we have rules as far as how we make them check the docks for, on the electricity down at Lake of the Ozarks? They've had numerous, they've had, I don't know how many people have died because a ground doesn't get put in or your ground fault, and they end up having to, it electrifies water around the dock. I just want to make sure that we're doing, you know, we're looking into that.
Yep. I'd ask someone from CWLP come up and, everybody, how that's handled.
It does pertain to this, but.
Yep.
Yeah, I know we've discussed this quite a few years back. I can't really exactly recall it. If it's, if it's Public Works that looks at that, but I know it's been raised before. And they, and it was looked at to figure out, make sure that things were kind of being followed. But I'll follow up with Nate.
Okay. It's just a safety issue and, you know, the clubs, I mean, they're liable for it if, you know, anyway, but they, it's just something we don't want to see happen.
Right. And just as a follow-up, Alderman, I'm a member of the Lake Council, and I can tell you that those are issues that we do discuss on a regular basis about safety around the clubs. And that has been an issue in the past, and we do watch that. And the individual clubs are pretty, pretty good about taking care of those things. And that is a problem because they could get electrocuted if they don't have the ground faults in.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll have CWLP work with IBW to come up with a process for annual checks or inspections because that's what should happen. God forbid that whatever happened. So it'd be good to be proactive in that measure.
Well, it's, it's individual docks. It could be any type of dock. It just, you know, it just, I've read about it down at, down at Lake of the Ozarks, and it is an issue. And we certainly don't want it, want it to happen here. So.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. The docket number passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-055 for the property located at 1500 West Washington Street.
It's been withdrawn.
Oh, what's it?
It's been withdrawn.
Oh, that one's been withdrawn. Thank you.
Actually, Mayor, the next, the, okay.
Alderwoman Connolly.
I just want to make sure you, it was all of those who were off. There was, oh, it was three properties in one zoning ordinance.
Right.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
So next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-056 for the property located at 141 North Lakewood Drive. Petitioner is Southside Columbian Home Association doing business as KC Lake Club. Present zoning classification is R1, Single Family Residence District, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 9 docks of Appendix A of the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to extend the dock to 250 feet as measured from the shoreline at the point known as the normal pool elevation instead of the 100 feet allowed. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is grant the petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that we accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendation for approval.
Second.
The move and seconded to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. The docket number passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. That concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair recognizes Deputy Treasurer for presentation of the financial report.
Thank you. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of October. The beginning balance is $42,258,896. We took in total receipts of $11,618,107. We had total disbursements in the month of October totaling $11,796,388, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of October at $42,806,18. The ending general balance also includes $15,202,700, which is the October ending balance of the ARPA money. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Your motion for approval?
Removed.
Second.
The move and second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do have a presentation from Floyd's Thirst Parlour regarding the rooftop proposal.
Should we pull that out, Mayor, from?
Yep. Should we pull it out?
Motion to pull.
2021-457.
Second.
2021-457 to debate.
Thank you. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Very good. If you'd introduce yourself to the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is John Gabala. I'm the attorney for Floyd's Thirst Parlour. I understand you have a slide deck with you, but we went and had these printed, so I'm going to pass it up. I want to thank you all in advance for your time here. As I said, my name's John Gabala. I'm the attorney for Floyd's. I have here with me Jeremy Brettemeyer, Andrew Denton of Floyd's, as well as Brett Streb of O'Shea Builders, and Tim Smith from Evan Lloyd wasn't able to be here tonight, but we have Tyler Stevens here in his place. I want to especially thank Alderwoman Purchase for her efforts and enthusiasm in this project, and also Ravi Doshi in the Office of Planning Economic Development for all his hard work on this. We started off with Abby, and he's picked up very well from where she left off. Floyd's Thirst Parlour is a historic, multi-level bar and venue space. I'm sure many of you have been there. Floyd's has been a cornerstone in downtown Springfield's entertainment and nightlife for decades. This picture I have up on Slide 1 here hangs in the bar. It's from approximately 1938, 1940. The three storefronts we see here comprise Floyd's building today. As you can see, kind of in the picture, let's see if this guy works. That's not going to work. Oh, well. My pointer got washed out, but that's all right. Floyd's has three stories there. It doesn't now, and we'll talk about that here in a second. This next picture is from approximately 1950s, 1960s. This also hangs in the bar. These were pictures that the guys found in the bar when they first took ownership of it. In this picture, you can see kind of in the far corner, it's two stories tall now. I believe there was some kind of a fire at some point. So what we discovered during this project is in the current roof was apparently intended to be a subfloor for a third story that was going to go in at some point, but for whatever reason, they didn't do that. And you can kind of see the storefronts, and Floyd's is really three buildings across now. So as you can kind of see those, there's one Kenny's Shoes, and I don't know what the business in the middle is, but Floyd's in the far corner has always been Floyd's for as far back as we have records for it. Taking us to, oops, taking us to the next slide. This is Floyd's today, well, a couple days ago. And as you can see, we got the three distinct bays. You can kind of see the three windows there. They're actually window display cases from back when the building was really retail sales. And that fishbowl in the center that maybe a lot of you guys walk by and you see patrons sitting there, that was a display window. That's why they're kind of elevated up front in a different way than you might see other businesses downtown. This is a shot of Floyd's rooftop, which is what we're talking about here today. But before we get there, I want to show you too, those bottom three bays, you can kind of see how those were three distinct buildings at one point from the pictures we saw before. The picture in the far left that you see with the papering over it is what we're going to be talking about here in a little bit too, will be the kitchen area and then the service window to give you an idea before we get there of what we're talking about. But anyway, this is the rooftop space that we're discussing here. And when the project's completed, we're going to have something to look like this. This is a renderings from Evan Lloyd to kind of give you an idea. People love open air spaces, and we've all seen rooftops in other cities, and we don't have to say it, but they're really, really popular. Rooftops have a way of kind of cultivating cool vibe. I mean, St. Louis and Chicago, they make people want to gather, linger, and come back over and over, which is really what we want here in Springfield. We want people to come downtown, stay a while, and want to come back. And these rooftops ideas and concepts are going to do that kind of thing. Here is it from the other angle. I'll go over the details of what you see here, but really, we're looking at, well, I'll get to that here in a second. I'll get in front of myself. We'll talk about the project scope. So we're talking about, in addition to the rooftop bar, this will renovate the northern bay, what I pointed out earlier in that other slide where it had the papering over those, the northern part, into a kitchen allowing food service on the premises. The project will also involve installation of a new elevator that will stop on all three floors, making the building ADA accessible for everybody at this point. With regard to the rooftop specifically, we're talking about 124 guests by our estimations with code and everything else. It will have rooftop views of the State Capitol Building and the old State Capitol Building, as well as seat 13 people at a bar across. So we're talking about a full-size bar and a good bit of size. This gets you a little bit better idea than the rendering can give you from the angle that we had. As you can see, my little pointer's not working, but as you can see, you've got the proposed rooftop bar in a little bit more detail on this slide. You've got the 13-person bar. Let me give this another try. Nope, washed out. That's okay.
It worked.
It's kind of on the bottom part. I didn't really get that. Maybe red wasn't the way to go for me. Anyway, so the 13-person bar there is up towards the upper half there, upper quarter. You can kind of see seats around to the corner. In the upper right picture, you've got the stairwell, one of two stairwells that are going to give you rooftop access, and those are going to be all the way down, I believe, to the first floor that we have now extending those stairwells. What you see there in the triangles, those are sun canopies. They're designed to basically take a little bit of the sun away so people are not sitting in full exposed sun. It can give you a little bit of shade, but you still feel like you're outside. Down in the lower left-hand corner, the square you see there will be the elevator. That's a full shaft going all the way down. And again, those are restrooms as well, full-size restrooms above the elevator. And then to the right of the elevator in the slide, before we get to the canopies, is your, another set of stairs going all the way down. So there'll be two separate stairwells to the roof in addition to the elevator. We've lost a lot of dining options in downtown Springfield this year because of the pandemic, so my favorite places are gone. This project will also expand the downtown dining options. Along with the rooftop, we're going to have a full-size commercial kitchen planned. So there's strong support for expanded lunchtime options. I work downtown, and a lot of people come downtown to visit, work, and we go. And not just during the week, on the weekends as well. You know, some things open, but they don't open maybe till 5:00. So the idea is to have, expand the hours and give a little more ability for people to have some extra dining options downtown. In addition to having a full-time in-house kitchen staff, the contemplation is that the area will be available for caterers who will be catering events on the rooftop without having to, you know, bring everything prepared and then bring it. They could prepare on-site if they so choose. Talk about expanded dining options. When Floyd, when the project's complete, Floyd's will be, go from being open now, not seven days a week, to a full seven days a week with expanded hours. And what we've talked about, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from people, just imagine sitting on Sunday brunch on the rooftop. I mean, this is going to be something that is planned and is really going to be a nice thing to sit up there and be able to take in this, again, the State Capitol views while you're doing this. From talking to Abby Powell before, this has been planned for quite some time, so we've discussed this along, for a good bit. And talking to some of you, the concept of the communication has been something that's come up. I've talked to the cons about it a little bit. There's interest in the community for something like this. I mean, it's something we're definitely wanting to explore down the road. And we're a little unsure of the exact mechanism because it's not at the heart of this project right now, but it's something that we're developing. And if the opportunity prevents, presents itself, we're hoping Floyd's be able to pivot and use some of the space for something like that. And we've seen these small businesses grow out of the farmer's market into brick and mortars. So this is one of those, you know, stepstones for maybe some people that aren't really willing to commit to a full purchase of a building or a full kitchen to try to explore their entrepreneurship and maybe get that extra step or that extra push. It's worked in a lot of other cities. It's just a matter of us all figuring out, you know, maybe collectively together down the road, what's the best way to get this done. But this is being done with that in mind, at least trying to have some thoughts towards potentially being able to do that at some point. I mentioned the food service window, the expansion here, and the project will also involve the pickup window, order window from the Fifth Street sidewalk. It'll allow Floyd's opportunity to continue to serve food even when the bar area is closed. Floyd's is at 1:00. There's zero interest in going anywhere beyond that. I talked to the guys. And with that said, maybe if somebody wants a slice of pizza, 1:05. Well, you've got that opportunity. And there's, there's really none of that going on downtown right now, that you can do that at any, anything. And also, you know, if there's, if there's whatever reason the bar side is closed, for whatever reason, you can still have the restaurant side, quote unquote, or the food service side open during lunchtime for walk-up window service, just that type of thing. There's strong support from, from talking to people of expanded lunchtime options and late-night dining options downtown, and I think this project addresses both of those needs. This obviously expands downtown event space. Right now, Floyd's hosts fundraisers for the GA, and I think some of the people have taken advantage of it as well. Other community events, there's opportunity for that, wedding receptions, fundraisers, gatherings, any types of things. It's just an appealing space. I think that, you know, it's going to be available to, you know, for, we already right now rent down the second floor, and now this gives the option for the second floor and the third floor, or the third, or any combination of these things. Each floor can function independently, or the entire place can function for one event, to really be pretty nimble in terms of what we would like to serve and what we want to do for people, in terms of what options we give them. In terms of economic impact, this project will attract more people downtown and encourage them to spend more time, and hopefully make them want to come back and spend more time downtown. The amount of people, the increased amount of people in downtown Springfield will encourage other businesses maybe to try these types of things, and turn, have more people come down to those businesses, and on and on we go. And every new business will, again, help make downtown a destination. I mean, we've seen what it can be, and I think every step we take towards getting back to that is a positive step and worth endeavoring. In terms of economic development, it creates jobs. When Floyd's is completed, the expansion project will result in approximately 25 full-time jobs and 16 part-time jobs. And that's not nothing. Those are jobs down here. And those are people who are coming downtown. You had to work at the bar, but they're going to be going other places, maybe before work and then maybe after work, and depending on their shift. So these are people coming downtown to work downtown, which is, again, is something we're always looking for. Projects like this often require combined effort between existing businesses and the City of Springfield, all working together to help create opportunities, attract new people downtown, and grow the economic engine at Springfield. This project is a perfect example of such an opportunity. The project checks all the boxes, meets all the TIF requirements. Floyd's will directly contribute to the property tax base, and as a result, TIF is clearly appropriate in this case. The Economic Development Commission has heard this proposal and recommended the TIF funds for this project. DSI has been a strong proponent of the project since its inception. Existing businesses downtown are also supporting this project because it's not about competition, it's about cooperation. When one business is doing well, attracting more people to the downtown area, they're all doing well, and everybody benefits in the wrong one. Floyd's is partnering with O'Shea, a local builder, and Evan Lloyd, a local architectural firm. Floyd's is a historic business downtown Springfield. It's been an anchor of the downtown, as I said, for decades. I mean, the project will be a significant upgrade to the downtown area, help attract people, and hopefully help downtown to thrive even more. As such, we'd encourage you to approve this request and help make Floyd's the first rooftop bar downtown Springfield. I want to thank you guys all for your time. I know we have a tight agenda tonight. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to address them.
Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank. Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's not often that we have presentations on projects that are, and ordinances that are on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
But I do want to say I really appreciate you, your willingness to do it, because I learned some things that are, I think, are very important this evening when it comes to job creation. The visuals are very helpful. But, you know, you mentioned TIF is a part of this project. And, you know, one of the things that has happened over the last, I'd say half a year to eight months, is the city's taken some criticism over some investments in TIF dollars and how things have been done and so forth. And we won't bring those all up tonight. But I think it's important that, and you started to point it out, that the city's had a policy for public projects, like, public-private projects like this that are partnerships, that there be a significant amount of private investment. And our policy's been one-third, the city will contribute maximum of one-third of the project. And those, those numbers are right there.
Yes, sir.
You certainly could be eligible for more reimbursement, but you're following, the recommendation is following the city's policy. That is appreciated because, like you said, it generates the real estate tax dollars. We're going to have an older building that's going to be even better. It's been a useful building, and I just appreciate your interest in downtown, your willingness to do something that, quite frankly, is going to be pretty darn cool. Sign me up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, and, and I was going to bring that up. Thank you. But my, my question is, is should we, should we have it in here that it's 520,000 or one, a maximum of one-third of the, the project cost? Or is that already in the developer's agreement for TIF? I,
Corporation Council?
Yes, it is. It's in the developer's agreement.
Right. So, so, because I was just thinking, kind of, kind of like Alderman Donlin, if they, if they do go over a little bit, we could still go, you know, one-third the cost, if that's what the council.
It's one-third not to exceed 520,000.
Yeah, that's how you'd want it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Which is a way that that's our normal.
Yeah, and that's how we addressed it with Corporation Council before. And I think we've looked at the budget numbers and run them with a conservative, a pretty, a pretty good approach that we, the anticipation is we're not going to run it on overrun.
Okay.
But we do appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Redpath.
This, this, this project is required to meet the criteria for paying prevailing wage and all, is that all in agreement, Corporation Council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the intention is then to use prevailing wage and.
Thank you.
And O'Shea is very familiar with that because they've done several TIF projects, so they're very familiar with that.
Yes, sir.
It looks good.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
I appreciate you giving, I had to wait on the good old mayor. But I'm very excited for this project. I thank you for, you know, bringing a presentation in, especially the catering piece. I think that's going to be unique. I think you guys can be real, real creative with that. The modern feel, definitely Springfield needs to be moving towards that. Bigger cities that we go through, we see rooftop bars, all of these good things. And, you know, happy to hear that you're working with Experian's Local Construction Group. So I'm all for it as Alderman of, of another part of downtown. I, you know, I hope this does truly, truly help us spark some economic, more economic activity down there. So I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? The one thing I will add is the finance bank is Security Bank, which is a downtown bank. I believe it's still a mutual bank. What a mutual bank is, they don't have stockholders. You know, it's owned by the depositors essentially. If they ever go to a stock-held bank, then the depositors are the individuals that get first rights to the stock. So we appreciate their investment in this particular project. So, very good. Thank you very much, John. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
And thanks to the owners sitting back there incognito, and they like to do the work and not the talking. So we appreciate it.
Good luck.
Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the November 2nd, 2021.
We need to probably vote on the ordinance. Do you want to address 457?
You want to vote on it now?
Yeah.
I think the motion was to bring it forward for debate.
It's on consent.
Okay.
Well, no, we pulled it so we could, there's a.
Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Remove.
Second.
The move and second, any discussion? And then we do have a technical amendment on that particular ordinance?
There is a technical amendment. It just simply inserts the proper business name because I think in the ordinance, we referred to Floyd's Thirst Parlour instead of the actual company name, so we're substituting the actual company name. So it's really just a technical amendment.
Move to accept the amendment.
Second.
The move and second to accept the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
So moved. Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. We'll do a roll call vote. Make it easier. There it is. It's up there. Very good. And the ordinance passes as amended, 10 voting yes, none voting no.
I'll help you clap.
Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the November 2nd, 2021, regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
Remove.
Second.
The move and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of the City Council meeting.
Remove.
Second.
The move and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
Go move.
Second.
The move and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
The move and second, any discussion?
Clerk, on 447, I'm present.
Noted.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2021-336, 2021-337, 2021-365, 2021-370, and 2021-371 and 2021-390 remain tabled in committee. Is there any action on any of that? Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, are we getting anywhere close on the 336 and 337?
That's pertaining to...
Handhandling.
It's still under review, but we probably will have something, I think, at the next meeting. We do believe that we have, thank you for asking about that just real briefly, we do think that we have language that is proper, in other words, something that is appropriate for the council to consider and is defensible, but we will bring that forward at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you.
Not on that particular topic, but I did want to talk about 2021-365. I do think it's appropriate at least to pull it for debate and have a discussion on how we're going to pay our employees and which fund is going to come out of, because I think we've got to make that payment one way or the other. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's the one associated with the motor vehicle parking.
Yes.
For, were proposed by Public Works to, or an OBM to make a reimbursement of the lost revenue associated with the meters, and that particular ordinance cover payroll. Is there a, Director McCarty, want to cover that first of the year? Maybe he's not here. There he is.
There are two. One is 365, and then there's 454.
Well, the more pressing one is 365, because we have an ordinance associated with it tonight. So...
There were two, there were two ordinances that were submitted. One was a supplemental out of corporate for a subsidy. I think that was $200,000 if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
The other one was submitted, I don't know, a month or so ago, and that was to use ARPA funds for revenue replacement, which is one of the four pillars of the purposes of the ARPA funds. In this particular case, motor vehicle parking, parking fees, all are allowable under ARPA. So we did, the reason it, again, revisiting this, the reason it's 300 and some thousand is we just followed the guidelines of the Treasury, and that is the revenue calculation shortage for last year.
Alderman Hanhour.
Yeah, why didn't, didn't we, so we got our first round of money before this, the, what, four or six million dollars or whatever? We didn't use any of that money to, for this because that was the same kind of deal.
Are you talking about Cures?
Yeah. I guess, I guess, I can't keep them straight, so...
Yeah, I know, right? It's hard. It's hard. So the Cures money, Care's Cures money, that was last year. That was, we got about $4.8 million total. The majority of that ended up in corporate fund, and we utilized mostly payrolls and police and fire, which were eligible. It's not that way this time, but at that time it was. We were able to capture most of the money that way as they extended, expanded the guidance. So most of that ended up in corporate, and in a roundabout way, some of it has ended up because we, we did do a, I mean, $300,000, I think, subsidy so far this year from corporate. So, I mean, we didn't tie it directly to that. It's six one-half dozen another, but there was a subsidy, it was from corporate. Most of that money went into corporate.
So the ordinance in committee covers the entire revenue replacement for motor vehicle parking.
For one year.
Right. For one year, and then the ordinance that will be on the agenda tonight covers $200,000, which is the projection to cover the payroll costs till the end of the year.
Is that tied to 365?
The 36, well, we'd do one or the other. That's, that'd be the question to the council.
$200,000 is, you're basically right, Mayor. $200,000 is what Public Works' projection is to get through the end of the year for all the expenses out of motor vehicle parking, most of which are payroll expenses. But there are some other ones as well.
Alderman Donlin and Alderman Gregory.
I'm sorry?
In addition to this one, too?
No, 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 just the 200,000.
One or the other. That's what we're trying to figure out.
Right. When Public Works approached, and of course, we talked to budget as well, had them run cash flows, we tried to keep an eye on it because, especially that fund, we've known about this for a while because we haven't been collecting much revenue into it. So we keep an eye on it. We ran cash flows, got a general idea in talking with Public Works of what they expect they need to expend beyond the payroll, and from that came up with 200,000. Might be a bit less than that, but we wanted to make sure that it was enough to get through and not have to come back and ask again.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Donlin, then Gregory, then McPenel.
Thank you, Mayor. So the bottom line is whether it's ARPA funds or corporate funds, you need $200,000 to get through the existing fiscal year.
That's correct.
So what we need to decide basically is are we going to take it from the corporate fund or the ARPA funds?
That is correct.
You don't care which ordinance?
I don't.
We just got to be specific? Okay.
Policy decisions are up to the horseshoe. Whatever you all would like to do, we've given you two ordinance. We're just looking for one of them, whichever you prefer.
Director, just to follow up, if we don't make the decision this evening, what happens? When do we have to make the decision by?
We're okay. I mean, you can wait a little bit if you want to. I don't have a drop dead date for when we run out of money, but even worst-case scenario, I can always do a short-term loan from corporate and pay it back once you make your decision.
Just want to make sure we all understand what our options are, so...
Mm-hmm. Yep, you do have time if you want to continue to think about it.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so for me, I get it that you don't care which one. For me, I just think that we should pull it from the fund for the revenue replacement and use it exactly for the American Rescue Funds and leave the corporate fund or fund balance where it is. I hear us talk about touching it and messing with it a lot, so I think we should take it out of this fund, and so we know where we're at with one and we know where we're at with the other one, and replace the revenue that we would have received for that. Public Works is one of our, you know, most needed departments. I think we just got to take care of, I know we're going to take care of in the payment of the employees, but that revenue obviously would have been needed if not in COVID, so while we have this opportunity, I think we replace that, in my opinion, on this topic. Thank you.
Alderman McPenel.
Yeah, I agree that we ought to use the corporate fund money, but I also agree with Alderman Redpath that we don't need, excuse me, I said that wrong. We should avoid using the corporate fund money and use the AARP, the American Rescue Fund money, but I agree with, I think what's being suggested here, we don't need to use 364,000 out of the AARP money. So if we pull ordinance 2021-365, which suggests using the AARP money, let's do, I would recommend we do an amendment to cut it down to 200,000.
I'd second that. Or the other option is just amend the one on the agenda tonight and designate ARPA funds for that.
Yeah.
You could do that as well.
That works.
You could do that as well as the funding source.
Sure.
And then 365 would just be pulled. Yes, Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, Director, what's our current fund balance at? What percentage is it? Because we just made extra payments into our pension funds.
For the corporate fund?
Yes.
I think we ended at 28% maybe?
28%.
It's been a little while since I looked at it, but I think that's...
And that was why we were able, right, we used a lot of it, but that's how we were able to make those extra pension fund payments and, and the other things. So I will say, whether this is 200,000 or 364, I'm opposed to using ARPA in smaller packages like this. I think we had a very interesting conversation around this horseshoe about the extent of large projects that need to be done, that absolutely fall within those four pillars, our, our large infrastructure improvements, the, I mean, I could talk sewers all day now. So I, I'm opposed to us kind of using this money for smaller projects. We've got a healthy fund balance, let's keep all this ARPA money for those larger projects that we know we can spend every dime of that. So, I, and of course, you know, if that's the will of the council, I just respectfully disagree with that, and, and I think we have too many large projects that need to be addressed. I'm concerned about nickel and diming this, ARPA funds. And just my opinion, Alderman Gregory.
Alderman Hanhour.
I'm not a big proponent of using fund balance. I've, you know, we've been told before that we've, we were healthy on the fund balance, and all of a sudden during, we get the budget and we start off when we're a lot lower than what, what we anticipated. You know, the question is, if you use fund balance, can, and we're low, can we use the ARPA money to replace, to replace that? Because you can't use fund balance to replace the ARPA money, right? So, so, and I guess, look, I'm, we got to do this. I think that we also need a plan on when we're going to, when we're going to fire up the meters again because we cannot continue to, you know, to, to allow the, the free meter parking at, you know, forever, you know? So unless, unless you do a layoff, and, and we certainly don't want that, so... But I, I'm just concerned, we got budgets coming up, and it's funny, we, we think we're healthy, and then all of a sudden we're, we're, we find out that we're not as healthy as we, we were, and that creates problems for all of us. So I, I agree with you. I want to keep, I want to be able to do large projects, but I also, you know, the fund balance is important for the, for the city, so...
If I might just clarify something that the Alderman said. You made the comment, you can't use fund balance to replace ARPA money. That's not exactly true. You can use fund balance for anything you want.
I was asking, I was asking, which way can we replace one or the other?
So, so if you, if you, if you remember a couple weeks ago, or when we had this conversation, it really comes down to sort of a six one-half dozen another situation here again. If you want to, Alderman Conley wants to use ARPA funds for, let's say she wants to use a million dollars in ARPA funds for drainage project in her ward, and you take 200,000 from that and put it into the MVP fund, and then you come back, well, you can just use 200,000 out of fund balance for the other 200, you know, 800,000 in ARPA and 200,000 in fund balance. You really can mix and match in this particular case, simply because we are able to capture the dollars, the entirety of the dollars through the corporate fund or any other fund, MVP, mostly corporate fund, but the SCBB fund, the corporate fund, MVP, and I think there might be one other, that we're able to capture all those dollars, so you really can kind of mix and match. That's why in this particular case, it, it really doesn't matter. I mean, it's really just a policy and how you want to do it. There might be some reticence to take corporate fund dollars to use for a project that you might otherwise you ARPA for, perhaps, but other than that, there's, it really doesn't matter.
I think what Alderman Hanhour is alluding to, once you use fund balance, you don't get that back.
Right. Certainly.
Alderman Gregory? Did you have something else?
No, I'm ready to roll, I'm ready to roll.
Any other discussion?
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to substitute the AARP funding source instead of the corporate fund for the ordinance that we're now having under discussion, 2021-365.
Second.
That's all ready for ARPA fund. I think you're talking about...
I mean, 454.
We can amend the one, there's another ordinance...
454, excuse me, thank you.
Yeah, 454?
Yeah. Needs to be read.
We'll just take that out of order, or take that right now, if that's all right. Agenda item 2021-454, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $200,000 for the Office of Public Works and the Office of Budget Management. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-454 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
The move and second, then there's amendment, Alderman, Alderman Redpath.
So, I agree with Alderman Conley on this. The ARPA funds is not something we should be using. If we did not have the ARPA money, we'd be using fund balance to pay this bill off. But we do have the ARPA money, and we do, all do have special projects that we need to get done in our wards. I think it's important that we use the fund balance because it's going to put us back to where we're supposed to be. It's going to be, if we didn't have the ARPA money, we'd be using fund balance. So, using the ARPA money is, it's going to start trickling out, and you all know it's going to happen. We've been, we've been arguing about this around, around the horseshoe for, for a long time about how we're going to use this ARPA money, and now it's starting to trickle out, and pretty soon it's going to be gone, and we're not going to get the projects done that we want. Every one of us has sewer problems, every one of us has drainages problems, and we should be using the money for that. I don't think we should be using this ARPA money for this. We should be using the fund balance because that's what we'd be using if we didn't have the ARPA money.
Alderman McPenel.
Yeah, we, there's a lot of ways to look at this, but I think it's real important that when this ARPA money runs out, that we have a strong corporate fund balance for future budgets. That's going to be real important. And, you know, when out-of-towners look at the city governments, they, they want to see a healthy corporate fund. They want to see a government that's well-run, that has a reserves in place for special situations, special needs, and if we bond out money, they want to see a strong corporate fund to get a best interest rate when we bond things out, when we have to borrow money for very large projects like, I mean, we're talking about down the road. So I can see this, you know, we can all have different opinion on this, but I think keeping a strong fund balance is, is really important for future budgets after we get through this...
You know, Alderman, I don't disagree with you at all. We all want the, we all want a strong balance, but the thing is, is that this ARPA money is above where, where we were. I mean, the fund balance is what we should be using, because it's, we're going to get a false sense of security if we're not understanding where we really are in our budget. It's going to come up pretty soon, and we're all going to be stuck with it. We need to use this ARPA money for the special projects that we've all decided we needed to have, and if we can't do that, then we're going to continue having flooding on, over on the West Side. We're never going to get the sewers fixed on Lake Springfield. It's trickling out, fellas, ladies and gentlemen, it's trickling out, and if you let it go, it's going, the bleeding will never stop.
Alderman Conley, then Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just kind of be clear, I, I think everyone here can agree that $200,000 is, is a drop in our general funds budget. I mean, this, so for me, it's not whether or not we're taking, we're not undermining the stability of, of our corporate fund by $200,000, or are really adding to it that much. This is, this is a fraction of what we're dealing, of the numbers we're dealing with. For me, it's the concept, and again, you know, apparently Alderman Redpath agrees with me on this one, so. Yeah, I just think we need to, we need to have more of a clear line around those ARPA funds. We know we have the large projects, and we can afford to pay people. I agree with Alderman Hanauer, we need to be having a conversation probably soon about when we wanna start meters up again downtown, and if we do, what those look like. That's another larger conversation for another day, but my concept is not, I don't think we're, we're not stabilizing or undermining corporate fund with this, with this action today. For me, it's, it's, it's the policy around it, behind it, and from my perspective, we should be really, really holding these ARPA funds for the projects that we, the large projects that we know need to get done. Because I'll tell you what, people who come to Springfield tend to talk more about the flooded streets than they do about our corporate balance. That's, and when you drive through downtown and you can't get through an underpass because the, you know, a sudden storm has flooded our railroad underpasses, that's what people talk about. We've had someone die. I mean, that's the stuff that people talk about. We have, we need to be, we need to be making large inroads into these large projects. And I realize voting for this out of ARPA funds or out of general revenue isn't gonna make a big dent in either one of them, but it is a policy issue for me, and so again, I will be a no on using ARPA funds for this.
Yeah, that's, since you brought that up, that's one of the arguments with TIF and using it for infrastructure. Because we did the underground water storage under the Y block, and that helped the drainage issues associated with the underpass on Third Street Corridor and Capitol. Alderman Purchase?
So, just to have some clarification, if this is voted down, Mayor, does it switch back over to corporate funds? So like if everyone votes?
Yeah, that's what it would be. And I guess if this gives anybody a sense of calm, with regards to this funding, what we always can do is pass with the corporate fund if we think that the corporate fund is troubled at the point of the budget, we can always reimburse the entire amount of the 364,000, 361 from ARPA at that time. It seems like some council members, they wanna see it all at once, and, you know, I think there's, that's the divisiveness with regards to the ARPA funds, is how are we allocating those as we go along? And it, let's face it, everyone around the horseshoe is for sewer, so I don't wanna put, this Alderman's against it, or this Alderwoman's against it, everybody's for it, and one of the highest projects is the lake. I mean, that's, the sewers around the lake, that's why I've asked Nate Bottom to start immediately to do the engineering study and design work, so we can have that plan of action in place. So it's a matter of making that commitment regardless if we have ARPA funds or not. So, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. One thing that I did wanna point out to everybody, if you look at first reading tonight, we've got over $1 million worth of unappropriated fund balance that they're requesting. So we might have started out with 28%, but I'm gonna tell you, by the time we get to budget, we're not, we will, I'll bet you we're, we'll be lucky to be at 20.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamin, then Alderman Williams.
Yeah, I need to kinda adjust your sight a little, so that you see both sides. Thank you.
Sure will.
Yeah, it's real important that we keep our fund balance strong because two or three years from now, you know, we'll be facing choices about whether to raise taxes or not if we get short on the budget. But the, the idea to amend the 364 down to 200 was an attempt at a compromise, because we're trying to say, let's not use as much ARPA money, let's cut it down to 200,000. And then let's see how we're doing next year.
Which portion of the ARPA money you wanna take it out of, Joe? You wanna take it out of yours? I need that, I need the part of my ARPA money at my ward. So if this is your ward, that's, we'll take it out of you too.
I'll answer that question. The part of the ARPA money we're gonna take it out of is specifically, the federal legislation says if you've got loss of revenue, you can use ARPA money for loss of revenue. So the, the parking meters have lost revenue, a lot of money, revenue, so we're just trying to replace that revenue so we can pay the wages out there.
Alderman Williams?
Well, I was just thinking that since both funds can be used, just split, you know, 100 and 100, and then everybody's happy. You know, it's a way out of us going around and around about $200,000, just use $100,000 of ARPA and $100,000 of the, of the general fund.
We've already spent over an hour over the last two weeks, why, why compromise now?
Man, let's go.
Any other discussion on, and right on the 2021, 2021-454?
Are we voting on the amendment or the ordinance?
To reduce it down to 200,000?
So the amendment is, correct, Alderman? The amendment is for?
Oh, never mind, we don't need the amendment because it's already set at 200,000. We just made an amendment to.
This is not a corporate.
Yeah, but it's 200 on corporate.
I'm gonna amend which fund.
Please, amendment, please.
Your amendment is to change it from corporate to ARPA.
ARPA.
I believe. Second.
454, yes.
Okay.
Call the question, and we'll call a roll call.
Alderman Redpath?
So what are we voting on, just clarify, what are we voting on?
What fund we're taking out?
This is to amend to take, use ARPA funds for the $200,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath?
No.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes.
Alderman Williams?
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase?
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSanto?
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yes.
You have seven yeses and three nos, Mayor. Thank you. Any, is there a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Second.
They're moving second, any discussion?
Roll call.
Can we take it here?
All in the record.
Yeah, we'll have it on here. All in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance as amended passes eight voting yes, two voting no.
Don't wanna hear no more whining either.
The next item on the agenda is document number 2021-437, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension and additional funding in the amount of $35,000 under contract number UW20-07-43, wood chipping and disposal at Lake Services Maintenance Division with Rex D. Evans, AKA Evans Cardage, for a total amount payable not to exceed $105,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
So moved. Second.
They're moving second, any discussion?
Yes.
I think Director Brown needs to come up and address this because there was some concern about how we were doing this, so I'd like for him to explain it if we would, please.
Yeah, essentially, we're asking for an extension basically to the end of February of 2022, which basically that allows us to continue to, to remove the wood chips. So basically, when we pick up trees, we need to be able to dispose of it, and right now we're really backed up. And we, we, we don't have time to really go out and have a, a new bidding process right now, but they are gonna be doing a new, a new bid for, for next spring. I believe it's for, could probably be a two-year contract going forward with that.
There was some current concern about how they're meeting the criteria, is that correct, Alderman?
Yes.
Oh, you know, like for prevailing wage? As way I understand it, the, when they, when a trucking company goes site to site, they do not have to pay prevailing wage.
And is that, is, are we good with that, Corporation Council?
This was, we did, we did talk to CWLP about that issue. When it's basically a transportation, they're not actually doing work, they're simply, it would be like the waste hauler, you know, we have a waste, I don't remember which company we use for the city, but all the city facilities. So when it's just a pickup, they just come and pick it up and take it to their site. That's not, does not fall within the parameters of a public works project because they're not actually physically doing work, they're picking it up and taking it away like a, like you'd see, for example, a, a garbage truck or something. It's just transport, it's just transportation. Because my understanding is what they're doing.
That's correct. Alderman Conley?
So if, if this Evans company wasn't coming, and what are they, picking up branches and running them through a chipper? Or are they just picking up chipped wood?
I thought they were just picking up chipped wood is what I was explaining to.
Well, that's our drop-off site for the limbs and everything, so they may be chipping it at their location, I'm not sure.
Okay, so if.
But we're paying them to take it.
For public works, yeah.
To take the branches.
Right.
From, from the, from CWP property down to Evans?
Right.
Okay, so if, if we didn't have this contract, who would be doing this function? Would we be taking?
They don't have a backup for that.
Would we be taking a crew from Public Works to perform this function?
I don't, I'm not sure.
Possibly, I mean, I'm just, I guess what I'm saying is.
I don't think we have a labor force for that.
It's disposal too.
I'm just, I guess, it seems odd that we can have a vendor that can come in and undercut other, other companies that would be paying prevailing wage just because they're just moving things? I mean, just because it's a trucking, I don't know, I don't understand that logic.
Well, they're following the rules, though.
To answer your question, we could use Public Works, have a Public Works group pick it up and take it out there instead of fixing potholes or cutting branches or doing other things.
And I'm not proposing that, Mayor, I guess.
But the, with this, this is the facility that does, that's who we utilize for, oh, for our leaf drop-off, limbs and everything, so that's why they were involved with this part of the process.
Okay, I, I just, I was just, I guess, Mayor, I was just trying to say, I didn't realize that was an out to, to kind of avoid a prevailing wage requirement, so that, thank you for sharing that.
Alderman, I'm an advocate of that also, but I just, that, that's why I ask Corporation
Council for the rules, if we're following the rules properly.
Yep.
Mayor.
All the women purchase?
Has this always been past practice, or is this something new?
It's past practice. We've used the same company for quite a few years now.
Okay.
Yeah. If I may, Mr. Mayor.
So this is our first time addressing it, but we've been using it for a while.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm clear.
Alderman McMen, oh, sorry, Alderman McMenamin, then Hanauer.
Yeah, just as far as past practice, at one time, 12 years ago, Alderman Redpath would remember this, we had our own site, it was a chipping and a drop-off site that the city owned, and then when the exchange at the interstate with MacArthur happened, we had, we gave up that site. So now we depend on Rex Evans for our entire chipping and disposal operations.
But when you did that, when you changed over to having Evans, did you have the contract that state that it needed to be done the same exact way it was with the city?
Well, that was when we had city employees doing it and the city owned the ground. Now Evans owns the ground and they got their own employees.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Donlin.
I seem to recall, we just got, we just, we just got the contract done with them, what, a year or two ago, Doug, I think, or Nate would know too. They, they were the sole source, nobody, we had no one else that, that could bid on it. I've, I've used them, I, I just took some bags out there, and, and I gotta tell you, they, they've got a lot of money wrapped up in their, in their, their unit out there. And I think it's, for us to go, and even if we have to pick up the, the limbs and take them out there, that's, that's kind of a hike from where, from the lake, that's, that's gonna cost us a lot of money in, in fuel alone. Let's not even take the, the, the time of the, of the employees. So I, I think we're getting a pretty good deal here. The prevailing wage, as long as, as long as we're following the rules, I think that, that's something that we have to look at.
Alderman Donlin?
Is this, just a clear, point of clarification, Director, is, is this for work that has already been done, or work that is coming?
Well, I think, I think they, they have done some work, you know, this, this past summer, but they also have more to do.
So it's for work that's already been done, and Corporation Council's saying that prevailing wage was not required.
Correct.
But the part of it that confused me was that, I mean, I, I take his word for the transportation part, I've not heard that before, but also there was some grinding being done, and that is a, I mean, they're taking.
I, I don't, well, the way I understand it, it's not considered a public works project, though. So it's, it's not required.
But I, I would think that the grinding part of the component of the work would have to be paid prevailing wage. I mean, it's public, I guess it's public property.
We've never had that issue with these past contracts, but we can definitely try to address it going for the next one.
Maybe it was my understanding, just very briefly, it was my understanding that the contract was for the transportation only, so at least that's how it was explained to me, or the, the question came up, is that they were actually just coming and doing the pickup, taking it to their site. So the, what the city was contracting for under the contract was for transportation pickup.
And, and if I can, but that's, that's what, I mean, that's not what was said earlier. So until we can get some clarification on that, I'm not prepared to vote on this.
Well, so, we're, we're asking them to come and get it and take it away. That's our contract with them.
Right.
So they're coming and grabbing it and taking it off of the property.
Plus disposal.
That's disposal. How they dispose of it, that's, that's kind of their, they're taking the responsibility at that point, after they've removed it from the property.
Properly disposing it at their location. Alderman Conley?
Thank you, and I apologize, Director, some of the confusion, maybe the ordinance says chip, load, transport, so to me it sounds, you know, like that's an order of, of operations.
Yes, not, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
But you're saying, no, and that's, I'm probably being a little bit too deep into semantics here. I, I just, if I could, Corporation Council, what city rule regulates the lack of prevailing wage for transportation issues?
Well, there's a state law.
Is it a state, okay, which one is that?
There's a state law on, that defines, you know, prevailing wage. There's a federal law, Davis Bacon, that is federal David, you know, federal prevailing wage. So the state law defines what a public works project is.
Okay.
So it's very, I don't think it's a gray area, because it would be no different than, and let's use a different example, with, for example, garbage pickup, because we have a contract for disposal, you know, coming and picking up the dumpsters and things like that. And so that would not be considered a public works project, like constructing a road or a building, or sidewalks, or, you know, constructing a power plant, or things of that nature. You know, some type of physical construction.
Alderman DeSanto?
But respectfully, Corporation Council, this, our public works crews do this work, so I think that's where the confusion is. I mean, we have, it's a branch pickup right now, and they're picking up branches, so.
We're governed, though, by a collective bargaining agreement. You see, that's, that's where there's, with our employees, we have separate contracts, agreements that we are bound by for terms, condition, wages, you know, things of that nature. Because, because there are employees.
I understand that. I think we all understand that, and I think that's what kind of the sticking point is on this.
Well, they, these, the, the Evans is not a part of our collective bargaining agreement.
We would have to take a look, their contract's actually coming up, so with the disposal of the site, that's coming up, we'll take a look at it, but that is the place that we have drop-off for the limbs and everything, so I think that's what the debate is. Two things, one is the actual work being done, if there's work of chipping in that, is that allowable under the bid contract that they, were the sole source provider? Essentially, they're the ones that bid it for the proper disposal, and is that within that contract? I'd have to take a look at, I'm not, but we will address it when we do renegotiate that contract. But for this, it's my understanding that the dollars here for services are already rendered. I think Alderman Donlin asked that, and for the most part, that's what it is.
Mr. Mayor.
And if we wanna amend it, or state that, clarification in the ordinance, but these were services that have been rendered. We should be paying that amount.
I think there is some confusion here about when prevailing wages has to be paid, but basically, it's not for public works operations, it has to be paid for a public work construction contract. That's, I think, the way it's worded, that obligates the city to pay prevailing wages. In other words, are we building a street, are we building a building, are we doing a bridge? This here's more in the nature of a service, and so it doesn't really fall into the category that requires mandates prevailing wage with a contract.
Yeah, because right now, I think we have haulers, I don't know if Darryl can answer this, with limb pickup, I think we, we were privatizing part of that and they just bid it out. So I'm not sure if on those, was that prevailing wage or not? That's a, that's what, we'd have to check. You know, they put in the bid, Corporation Council, do you know? It's just like garbage pickup. I mean, if garbage pickup, I don't know if we require prevailing wage on that.
I'm sure we do not.
Right.
Because that's clearly not a, that's a service, not a, a construction activity.
Right. That's same with the leaves, you know, with Republic, they pick up the leaves, and so we have public work crew that could go out and pick up leaves, but Republic's doing it, does Republic pay prevailing wage on the pickup of leaves?
Well, again, I think that's a service, that would not be a construction activity to pick up leaves, and I think that would be pretty universally understood. Just with the bidding process, I don't remember off the top of my head, I do know that on the bidding for the services like leaf pickup, for example, I do not recall that that's classified as a public works project, so that we're trying to indicate to the Republic, for example, what they're paying, their employees.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you. So maybe this is something, if, if the concern, because I mean, part of my concern is prevailing wage and that we're not having, you know, certain, certain businesses undercut their bids, but, so maybe that's an issue that needs to be addressed through our bid process that we, because I, I believe I've got the right act up. Maybe that's something, even though it's not specifically stated in state law, asking for prevailing wage on these projects is something that the city could still do through our, our bid process, correct?
I would have to look at that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it, we'll verify it, then if that's the case, is there the option, you say it's not within state statute, then we have the option, so we're taking Republic for instance, costs are gonna go up, I mean, it goes back to Alderman Hanauer's concerns with the budget, so everything has a cost associated with it, and that's what we need to determine. On the infrastructure, it's, you know, without a doubt prevailing wage, the other service part, that's what we're not sure of. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, when we did, and, and I guess this is all kind of intertwined, but when we did the, the contract for the, for, for the leaf hauling and the branches and everything, for, for the leaf hauling and the branches and everything, we had to put a, we had to raise, I think we tripled or doubled or tripled the fees for, you know, and, you know, so if we're gonna, if we do the garbage, let's just say we, we, we have to do prevailing wage on, like on the garbage pickup, you're gonna, they're gonna raise, they're gonna pass it on, they're not gonna, they're not gonna, you know, take that. That, you know, and then you're gonna have some, some mad people. In this case, I hate to say this, but this is the only, only group in town that I think probably bid on this. I, I'm not sure, but I know that they're the only one that bid on the disposal of leaf and branches. And if they go away, we have nothing. And it, it will cost us an awful lot of money if they go away. So, you know, we can, I have no problem going with, you know, going on the prevailing wages on services and on contracts like that, but I think we gotta be careful when we're, when we're, we're just, we're just following, you know, we're a customer there in a way. And I'm, well, I probably, what probably happened, I'm speculating here, but I think that you had, we, we bid this out for, to get it out of there, they probably say this is the, this is the cheapest way for them to do it is to chip onsite and get it, get rid of it. We didn't specify, and I'd like to, it'd be interesting to see the contract, if, if we specified that they, you know, they had to chip onsite or whatever, but to me it'd be, they're gonna do it the cheapest way they can, you know, or to, otherwise it's not gonna be profitable for them.
Alderman Plugenti?
Should we hold this for two weeks till we get some clarification?
I don't know what the status, here's the risk you run. I mean, if I'm the business owner and you owe me, well, I don't know what the ramifications of the contract are. I don't know if they're needing the payment now. Do you know, Corporation Counselor Doug? I'm not sure.
It was, it was my understanding, I don't wanna cut Doug off, but my understanding was, Mayor, what you'd indicated is correct. It was my understanding that the thirty, the pending thirty-five thousand was for services already done over the summer or fall?
I thought that was the majority of it, but I didn't, I thought they had some work still to do.
Okay.
But I, I could be wrong. Maybe I misunderstood.
The bottom line is, we're gonna have to pay them.
Yes.
Work's been done, so if anything, I'd encourage a amendment to pay the contractor what they've delivered or taken care of already. And if we can figure out what the differential is and hold that part.
If there's issues with it, we'd deal with it when the contract is rebid next year.
That's right. This is a continuing contract, we just have to meet our obligations.
It's only money.
I would just, you know, I'm paying for any wage, I understand what the issues are with that. The only thing that, with, with this kind of a bidder that don't like, like Alderman Hanauer said, is the only game in town, he will pass that on directly to us. And with the water fund, that's what's paying for this. And the water fund is, you know, it's, it's, we're in budget process right now and the first round of cuts is not gonna be good. You know, it's, it's costs for chemicals, treatments, everything's going up. There's gonna be some significant cuts already. So it just means that we'll do less, perform less services if our costs go up. So just keep that in mind.
Is there a motion, Mr. Mayor, on this for passage?
Yes, there was.
Yeah, get a motion for passage.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-456, an ordinance approving the appointment of Patricia.
Did you skip 453, Mayor?
We got the, 453.
Yep, sorry about that. Next item on the agenda is 2021-453, an ordinance levying and assessing taxes to partially fund the statutory contribution of the police and fire pension funds. Chair Luntain, a motion placed agenda number 2021-453 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Repath?
So here we are and we, we've always said that we want to make additional payments to the pension fund and we all support that. But is this gonna put us in a financial situation next, in about three months when we start the budget situation? Is this something that we should hold off on?
This is, this is for this year to pay the.
I understand, but we've already made an additional payment earlier too.
So this is for the levy. Yeah, Director McCarty, we have to come up and address it.
So this is the one that we have to levy?
Right.
This is annual property tax levy.
This is the mandatory one, Bill?
And it has to be to the clerk, you can't put it off.
So I guess I was directing my comments toward additional payments, so this is.
Yeah, this, this doesn't have anything, just to give you some background on, since I'm up here, so we're looking at twenty-three, a little over twenty-three million in property tax revenue last year or this year, I guess. It was twenty-two point nine, so about two hundred thousand more expected. That keeps us at the same rate the city's been at for what, thirty plus, forty years, whatever it's been. And this will put us, all of this will go to police and fire pensions, which will still leave us about five million short of the required payment for next year. So that'll have to come from other sources.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-456, an ordinance approving the appointment of Patricia Senior, Senior Carter to the Civil Service Commission. Chair Luntain, a motion placed agenda number 2021-456 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-459, an ordinance approving addendum three to the agreement with the Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation, now known as the Springfield-Sangamon County Growth Alliance, previously authorized by ordinance 237-06-18 to provide an additional two hundred fifty thousand for a total amount not to exceed one million dollars and extending the date of completion of the project until February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two for technical and professional services to assist the economic growth within the city. Chair Luntain, a motion placed agenda number 2021-459 on final passage.
Motion to discuss?
Okay. Alderman McMinim?
Well, is there a second on the motion?
Motion for passage.
You have a second.
A second. Okay. So Ryan McCready is here tonight and I think, congratulations, Mr. McCready, for doing an outstanding job at the Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation, the formal name in here, but we've got a new name, don't we?
Springfield-Sangmon Growth Alliance?
You don't have to come up yet, maybe. What's the new legal name, excuse me?
In the ordinance. Springfield-Sangmon County, or Sangmon Growth Alliance.
Yeah, Sangmon Growth Alliance. So the caption is using the old name. You're doing an outstanding job and I think all the aldermen appreciate the, the work that you're doing. I know I asked for a letter of, of, of support for a project in Ward Seven and you, you got it out in a day. And I think other aldermen have seen the same kind of response. So I'm trying to find a way to support this. I think some of the other folks at the county aren't so helpful to the city, but that's a, a different discussion. So I hate to bring up a discussion we've just had about using corporate fund money or American Rescue Fund money, but that's what I was gonna really talk about tonight, but then we've already had that long discussion in relation to the, the parking money. And so what I'd like to do is just hold, if, I'd like to make a motion to hold this for a week to get an opinion from our city attorney whether ARP money can be used for this instead of our corporate fund money. And then we can have a full discussion about what we ought to do. I'm in favor of what Alderman Hanauer's pushed. He's not here right now in the moment, it looks like. But, you know, keeping our corporate fund robust and strong, I think is a really important goal. The other goals are important too, save us much money for sewer projects, but I think we're still gonna have enough money for that. So I'm gonna make a motion to hold this to get an opinion from our legal department about whether we can use ARP money for the Alliance of Progress money or not. So is there a second on that motion?
I got just a question.
Alderman Gregory?
I, I would have to disagree with you, you know, knowing from the, the rules on American Rescue Funds, I don't quite think that this fits all the criteria. I, I'm certainly open to hearing.
That's where I wanna get a legal opinion.
Yeah, legal opinion on that. For, for me with this, I, you know, I, I did have plans on supporting it as, as the last payment. I would imagine you guys are gonna come back at some point with, with the new contract to continue to go forward. You know, so I, you know, over this timeframe, you know, I, I've had some discussion with members of the community and stuff and we really wanna see this work for the eastern part of the town, all the way from the south to the north, you know. We really wanna see it work for that and, and, you know, cause I, you know, if it wasn't for, for, for a good conversation with Ryan and trust him, he might probably be trying to do something with this to ensure that we put some resources over there to ensure that we're getting some attention on the eastern part of the town. And I'm not even talking just for my ward, I'm talking about everything when we cross those tracks. We, we gotta get better at, whether it's Chuck Ward or Roy's or Mr. Plugenti's. We gotta get better. So with that said, I, I do have confidence in, in, in you, Ryan, and, you know, hopefully within this next contract, we won't have to do anything differently. But I, I certainly will respect a, a legal opinion, but I, I can't say I would be too supportive of taking out of rescue funds.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Ryan being, being here and his, the, the way he conducts himself as far as communication with the council. I, I appreciate getting a heads up on things that are not only in Ward Nine, but just in the city in general. Just a couple of points of clarification, some things that were said earlier. My understanding is that the Springfield-Sangmon County Growth Alliance is a separate corporation and not a governmental unit, whether it's county, city, park district, whatever. Is that correct? He's shaking his head yes.
He can come up.
Good evening. Yes, the Springfield-Sangmon Growth Alliance is a separate public-private partnership. We're not an entity of local government. We're, we're a separate organization. So yeah, that's kind of for that clarification.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my second question, I guess, is my understanding is that this two hundred fifty thousand dollars was budgeted and is a part of the budget that we all passed and is not taking money out of fund balance with a, this, this is not a fund balance ordinance, this is a ordinance that authorizes the expenditure of something that we already put in the budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Repath?
You know, if we really have commitment on what we're looking for, for Sangmon County and Springfield on economic development, this guy has made a difference. He, you all, we all know that, that what he brought to the table since he's been in that chair has been remarkable. And I'm really pleased that things are going as well as they are for you all. And I, I think, I think this council as a commitment needs to pass this ordinance with the budgeted money that we put in here.
Thank you. It was an honor to get to come back home. So I appreciate that.
Hand hour and then Alderman Conley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, keep in mind that, that they have, we have some of the best, some of the biggest corporations that are on the board for this and they support this. And I think it's important that the city stay behind it to show our corporations that, that, you know, if the CEOs, if our corporations are putting the money in, I think it's important that we, we stay with it. And, and I think, I agree, Ryan, you've done a lot better job than what we had before as far as communication with, with us. The first, the first guy that came in, we know what happened there and that was kind of a.
Set the bar low for me.
But that was long history, but, but no, you've done a, a great job with it and, and, and I appreciate it and, you know, you give, you give us heads up when you're working with companies that are in different wards or, or whatever and, and, and please keep that up. Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate the kind comments, but please let me know when I'm not doing it right too, because that's even more is important.
Oh, we will.
Give me a call though, let's not do that here. Give me, give me a chance, the phone first.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for thinking you wouldn't hear if things weren't going well. That's very generous of you. No, I, I would just like to echo my colleague's comments. We've already committed to giving you these, to, to this, 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 this fund allocation. I was really heartened and we kind of just a little bit carried on the conversation around your perspective on, on making jobs more available and making people more accessible to work and really looking at those, those barriers that exist for people in, in achieving full employment. I'm excited for the perspective you bring to, to work and, and life in Springfield. And I, you know, with all due respect, Alderman McMinim, I, I, we actually, it's not just two weeks because we're off next week, guys. So I, I would not be in favor of, of holding off on this vote tonight.
What's the motion? Is the motion for passage or?
The motion is to hold this for two weeks.
To discuss, yeah. Yeah.
There's, there was an amendment.
I think we moved it for passage, didn't we?
No.
Not yet.
It's still for discussion right now.
Okay, we're just in discussion right now.
Right.
More discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman Plugenti, then Alderman McMinim.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make a point here. I had someone contact me about bringing a business, a small business here to town. And I, I contacted Ryan and they were already working on it and working with him. And I think that's one of the things that we need to do is utilize their office a lot more.
Thank you. Yep. Anything we can do to help?
I make a motion for passage.
Alderman McMinim?
So just a couple of points. Number one, if we, we passed a budget before we knew we were ever gonna get ARP monies. Right? We didn't know we were gonna get thirty-four million dollars back in February when we passed the budget. So we, we appropriated the monies that we thought was available for this back then. Point number two, if we use ARP monies for this instead of corporate fund monies, we have just increased our fund balance by quarter of a million because there'll be a quarter of a million dollars more in our corporate fund at the end of this budget year than there would be if we, than if we don't use it. So, than if we did use it. So I'm trying to bolster our fund balance at the end of the year by not spending down corporate fund money. That's just, as far as that's concerned. Now, as far as, you know, is Ryan McCready running a, in the, something independent of government? That's true. But let's remember how this got started. One time the Chamber of Commerce was doing what was at one time what, what you're doing now. And it was the county initiative to, to move it out of Chamber of Commerce and put it into a entity that's largely initiated by the county government. And so I'm just gonna finish by saying that. I've got a, the county's not being helpful to us when it comes to Enos Park Extension. And we don't know what's gonna happen with Springfield, S H A, TIF extension. And I know that Andy Van Meter and Brian McFadden, they're, they're really, they really like this idea of the, of a, of a different form of organization for our countywide economic development. And I just want return cooperation. When we go to extend the Enos Park TIF and we go, go to extend the S H A TIF, they, they want cooperation with this quarter of a million dollars. Back then we committed quarter of a million dollars per year.
Well, the only thing I will say, Alderman.
And we didn't get, and so I'd like to see more cooperation from the county, because we're giving quarter of a million dollars and then we want the Enos Park Extension and that costs the township five thousand dollars a year. So I'm just upset by that and I wanna send a message to the county people.
As, as far as the Growth Alliance supporting that, the mayor brought it to Growth Alliance Board Meeting and you had a letter from us, full board support for that, support for the TIF extension. And we had, we submitted our letter quickly after he came to the, at the board meeting.
So did the county. Cause I saw it.
So.
I understand, is the county did too, Sangmon County.
Well, we submitted ours, what, early in the process. Right. I think. Before I knew of all the other. We all can be in agreement.
Township, the county township is led by a county elected official, by two county elected officials. So that's the pay.
All the questions.
Okay, hold on a second. To clarify, we all can agree that process should have went a lot smoother than it did. And we all can agree during a pandemic, everybody should be all in for improving Springfield. And with the Enos Park TIF, that was a no-brainer. It shouldn't have gone as long as it did. And as was pointed out, you know, even though someone pacifies the city, they always knew they had an out by withholding another taxing body. So it is what it is. But the good news is we got it done. And so we're appreciative of that, but we'll go around the horn real quick and then we'll call the question. With Alderman Repath, Alderman Plugenti and is it Alderman Conley?
Alderman, your points are valid, but just, we're mixing apples and oranges here. What we're getting from this group is results. We haven't got that before because the guy before him was a disaster. And so it's, it's important.
Criminal disaster.
It, it's important that we support this group and we push those other issues aside for now. We need to get this done tonight. Let's go.
Thank you. Alderman Plugenti?
Ditto.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Motion for passage.
Second. Moved in second to pass. Any discussion on that? Very good. All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-478, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of fiscal year twenty-one lead-based paint hazard reduction grant number I L L H D zero four seven five dash twenty-one from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of three million.
$3,400,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2021-478 on final passage.
No moves, Mayor.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes, 11 voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-479, an ordinance appointing Lisa Branham to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission. Good movement.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-480, an ordinance approving the appointment of Catherine R. Heffernan to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission.
Come on.
Move? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gregory.
Can you give me the demographic makeup of our Economic Development and Planning Commission, just to ensure that we're getting good balance on it? I think we're getting to it and making headway on it. Definitely two young ladies here. So that's great. I just want to review it and make sure we got a good balance, if you could, please.
Yeah, we'll provide that. Again, this is a data that's been collected by this administration, hadn't been done before, but we'll provide that for all the commissions.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021, an ordinance approving the appointment of Kimberly Elliott to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
The movement second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-482, an ordinance authorizing the exception, acceptance of RFP number P D 22-11 for a two-year contract with Flock Safety for a total amount not to exceed $415,000 for automatic license plate readers, ALPR, cameras and solution from March 1st, 2022 through February 29th, 2024 for the Springfield Police Department.
So move.
Second.
The movement second. Any discussion? Alderman Donlin? Just a quick point. I don't see a funding source that needs to be added to the backseat. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure that is clarified before the committee is a whole. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council? Alderman DeSanto?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had a few phone calls today about several union contracts that we have passed as a council that are waiting on your desk for signature. I believe the number is six. Some include back pay. The holidays are coming. People are upset. They want to get paid and they want to make sure that this contract is in place. So is there any reason this is being held up?
Yeah, there's not, yeah, there's not six. There's a process that I think there are four that are going back and forth for checking. There's a proofing process where there might be, you know, multiple changes. So the only one that I'm aware of that's right now in, still in process is one. The others are, have been approved by the other parties. So they're just going through a normal process. But when you're dealing with ones where there might be 40 or 50 changes in one contract, then both parties take a lot of time going through to check the language. So it's kind of a normal process. But my understanding is that right now there's, I think, one where there's actually final work to be done on it. I think the others are just in normal process to be signed. And the, the other parties always sign them first, then submit them back to the city.
Well, there are some pretty upset city employees out there, so I think that needs to be communicated to them.
Very good.
It'll be processed before the holidays.
Yes.
Any, Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, at this time, I think, let's just go ahead and withdraw 2021-365 since we passed that ordinance.
Second. The movement second to withdraw 2021-2065?
365.
Oh, 365. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Alderman Repath.
So Mayor, we've talked about the sewer issue at, at the lake. And I know that Sanitary District has got their part of their proposal done. I know that you've talked to Director Bottoms about that. Can you tell me where we are on that, on that proposal? I think we get into a situation where we plan and we delay and put it off to the end of the year and then we can't do these projects. I think it's most important that we start to do is our planning and engineering stuff through the winter months so we can start the projects in the spring. Would you please ask and move that ordinance forward in addition to any other ordinances that are, that have to, that have to be done next, next year? We don't need to be using all winter not to, not to do our planning and our engineering when we should be starting construction in the spring.
Yeah, actually, on the, the plans for the lake sewers, all of them, not just Linden Road, they're going to bring forward the ordinance, I think, for sure in December for the engineering work to get done over the winter. Now's the ideal time to do it in conversations with the particular party that would be doing the work or has done the work.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? New business coming before the council? We have a couple items. At 3 o'clock on Monday, November 22nd, at Lincoln Library, in the Carnegie Room, there will be a TIF Joint Review Board meeting. And again, that's with regards to the S H A TIF. And that's where all the taxing bodies are invited, as well as the public. So feel free to join us at 3 o'clock Monday. The city is, as a reminder, City of Springfield offices are closed Thursday and Friday of next week due to Thanksgiving holiday, November 25th and 26th. And there's no committee as a whole meeting. The next one will be a week from, or two weeks from today. And then Springfield J C's Holiday Lights is returning downtown on December 4th at 5:30. Businesses and organizations interested in being part of the parade, walking or float may register online at SpringfieldJCS.net. And then we did have an, we did receive good news from Senator Durbin and Senator Duckworth with regards to $13.5 million being awarded to the City of Springfield Rail Project associated with the Madison and Jefferson Crossings. So that's a great announcement right before the holidays. And what it does is ensures the project funding moves on and there's not going to be a disruption. What's important about that is with the infrastructure funds coming down the pipe, it keeps the rail project on the forefront so you can move forward with regards to the planning process, make sure there's no disruption.
Mayor, a follow-up on that.
Yes.
With the, with the new money that's coming out of the federal government for infrastructure throughout the country, the $1.5 trillion, do we, are we putting together a wish list from, from the City of Springfield on projects, then bridges, roads, and that kind of thing that we're going to be able to submit to somebody, I presume Senator Durbin, in order to try to bring some of that money back to us to have additional monies for our projects that, that we need? And, and another thing, does, would that, would that money be eligible for our sewer problems in the downtown Springfield area? It's something that we have never been able to come up with the funding for. But would that money be, will we be eligible for that money for that kind of projects?
On the projects, it'll be competitive basis. The $1.3 trillion that the, of those funds, the amount that the state gets, it will flow through the states in a competitive process. It'll take a while to work through the, all the parameters. It's my understanding, probably be several months.
So we're going to have our lobbyist working on that so it don't end up in Chicago?
Well, actually, what we want to do is each of you have your own desires, right? We need to create the list.
Absolutely.
We have one that we submitted during the capital plan, during the state, when they passed their own capital plan. So we'll circulate that again. But I'm sure there's going to be additions and maybe subtractions, hopefully, of work being done. So we'll circulate that, but, you know, survey your own areas of importance. We know Koki Mill for Alderman Donlin, right?
That's right.
Top of the list. And things of that nature. And so that's why we want to make sure all those projects moving forward are within the wish list. But it will be a competitive process without a doubt.
Especially the railroad trestles on the 18th corridor that go down the 18th Street corridor all the way. And that's the one that crosses Hazeldale, right by Franklin Park. It's been, you can only get two cars through there. So that's, that's an issue too.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you. We were from the state and I, if we could get Larry to see what, what's the deal with the, we were in the budget. Last year, I think, we were awarded $4 million to go toward Cockrell Lane, the one-lane railroad bridge. It's a life, health, safety because you can't get fire trucks underneath it and whatnot. I, I haven't heard and I don't know that they've, they put it in the budget, but I don't know that we, we haven't heard anything about that money. And I don't know if it's gotten held up or if it just kind of, what happened to it. But can we, can we have Larry look at that or try to, try to shake that free? Because, I mean, if not, I definitely think we got to look at doing something there because it's, I mean, that's a one-lane bridge and it's dangerous. And, and unfortunately, there's, there's a train that uses it, I think, once a week. So I wish we could reroute the train and then just take the whole thing down.
Yeah, we'll have Nate Bottom check on the status. And if the funds aren't in the queue where it should be, then we can have the lobbyist look at that.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to just touch briefly on, you know, the railroad relocation is going to be a major, major thing for our community. We all know that. We all see that. And, you know, with that comes along with, with ensuring that, you know, all around it, you know, is we're really putting some work in. So that's, you know, very, very important, S H A, S H A TIF. We spoke on that. I know there's some thinking that, that there may be some trouble. There probably shouldn't be any trouble. We passed Enos Park TIF. Because in the end, it's about people. So I hope, you know, that we have the same support for Enos Park. I support Enos Park. I wrote letters in support of that to make sure that, that came to fruition. Because in the end, it's about the people of the community. And the area that we're trying to extend this S H A TIF is in desperate need of, of some help. And we can't get a lot of it to them right now. They got a big old building that's been sitting there for 30 years around them. They've suffered a long time. So we shouldn't have, you know, you know, I hope our friends at the county or whoever, you know, may, may, may hold this up, you know, heed the word of the, the people, that they, they definitely deserve this S H A TIF. And we've seen it do wonders, you know, for Madison Park Place and that area. And, you know, this will be good for us. So thank you.
Any other new business? Do you have some individuals sign to speak? Sean Taylor?
Good evening, council members.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. I did have a speech wrote out here, but I'm not going to go with that. This is my fifth city council in the third city, I do believe. Usually issues or some, some arguments might be heated up. Either taxes went too high or ambulance companies want to switch ownerships or something like that. But I'm just going to tell you a brief history about myself and what I'm trying to bring to this city. I am a United States Army veteran. I stay at the Spring Street Veterans Home. And unfortunately, I'm the youngest person there. But I've learned a lot from these guys and their experience in their service, as well as in life in general. I've learned how to be a lot more patient. My project kind of, kind of incorporates that, but it also incorporates a little bit of what I went through. I've been through addiction. I've been through homelessness. Never thought I could get out of it. I wanted to die if I couldn't have a drink. Who, who gets to that point? I came to Springfield five months to the day today. Five months ago. I came here, started doing meetings, kicking it, talked to the guys, you know? Veterans are all different types, ages, you know, different races, colors, creed. But I also had this idea given to me about four years ago, a lady who instructed me in the art of urban agriculture. She put a passion into my heart. She put a passion so deep in me that I used to go to these city council meetings and advocate it. I want these vacant lots, tired of people throwing garbage and televisions and couches in them when they could be used for a much more better purpose, not for, you know, beautifying the area, but for the community that surrounds it. So I came up with an idea called the Urban Farm Force. Incorporates a little bit of discipline and a little bit of knowledge of urban agriculture, basically basic gardening. Being homeless, since I've got here, working a job, trying to do what I can just to make ends meet, trying to get up out of veterans' place at some point in time, I realized that people do have talent. A lot of the homeless people around here, they struggle to survive. A lot of them have mental health issues that I'm currently watching a buddy of mine go downhill right now. He wasn't like that when I got here. I could talk to him like I talk to each and every one of you. But as time went on, weather gets colder, his need to survive became more important than just a friend. So I had proposed this whole, I guess, organization, business, whatever you want to call it, to train and educate people to figure out if they can be trained and educated, first of all. Train and educate them in the art of basic gardening and let, for the first time ever, I've done a lot of research on this, community gardens, solar home communities, self-sustaining areas in less desirable parts of the city, to train people who came from the dirt to grow in the dirt. And to give them an opportunity to not only have an, you know, be able to live within the community using resources like the sun, the rain, learning how to grow food, not just for themselves, but for possibly local businesses, for your families. And give them an area and a knowledge of self-sustainability while providing a service to the surrounding neighborhoods of which they're doing this in. It comes with a lot of hard work. And from what I've seen, only being here for five months, these people struggle and they work hard to find a place to sleep. Shelters, rules, other things have came across. I was in shelters. I didn't like the rules either. I'm no different than anybody else that was out there. The only difference is, is I'm trying to make a change because I'm tired. I've seen, the first thing I saw when I got to this city was a whole bunch of needles first. First of all, all over the city. That was kind of horrible. The second thing I saw is a group of people massed in one area. And I asked them, well, what's going on? I'm homeless. Different circumstances create that homelessness. My circumstances created my homelessness. I didn't understand that I had certain perks, certain, certain opportunities that people who have not had an opportunity to serve in the United States military have. I didn't know that. I thought, you know, it's over, it's time to go and work at McDonald's. But with the knowledge that I have gained and the passion that I have, I honestly think that Springfield could be the first of first. And that's what I want to call it, the first of first, because it's never been done before. Integrating solar home communities within a neighborhood while working urban farms, while networking, not just living in, supporting, communicating, not with the neighbors, the neighborhoods. In the Army, there's healthy competition. Healthy competition helps the company grow stronger between platoons. And I'm hoping you guys, I hope my words haven't fallen upon deaf ears like it has all the other city council meetings. I hope you guys give me a chance. I did have bullet points to hand out. Unfortunately, I'm going to keep those to myself. If you would like to contact me, I'll be at Spring Street Veterans Home with more details about it. There's a lot of other stuff that I just couldn't fit in here. And I just hope you guys give me an opportunity to prove myself, prove that it works, and give some of these people down here an opportunity to have second, third, fourth, maybe their last chance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing your story as well. Michael? I don't know. They don't have a last name?
There's none of my last names.
Is there someone out there named Michael that likes to address the council? I think Michael. You state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Michael Schultz. I am 18-year-old, 18-years-old, and I am currently a student at University of Illinois Springfield studying experimental psychology with a minor in child advocacy studies. I moved to Springfield right after graduating high school to try to achieve a better life for myself after a lot of things went down back in Decatur. And since moving to this city, I have seen so much potential in the people of this city, the institutions of this city, and frankly, even from these city council meetings, I have seen a lot of positive change take place. But there is one issue that I haven't seen addressed yet in any major way throughout the city. And that is the fact that since April of 2021, the City of Springfield has shut off the utilities of 6,837 households affecting an estimated 17,366 people. The shut offs since April are 82% of the total shut offs we have seen since the beginning of the pandemic. of the pandemic. So this problem is not going to be going away anytime soon, especially considering that it is expected that heating costs will go up by 150% since last year over the course of this winter, leaving thousands of households without heating in the winter or water with which to wash their hands during a pandemic, and potentially put them on the streets. And speaking of the pandemic, it was December of last year when Sangamon County had only 20 intensive care units left in all of our hospitals put together. And we are now in a spike of COVID cases that we have not seen since last year, with a vaccination rate of only 65%, making herd immunity effectively a lost cause before this next winter spike. While I understand that every single issue taken before this council is very important to the people of this city and the businesses that reside within it, this issue is not just about registering vacant buildings or extending a dock or having a good number of parking spots. People's lives are on the line. As I mentioned before, we are in the middle of a pandemic and people's water is getting shut off. They cannot wash their hands in a pandemic. I truly do believe that each and every one of you cares about your constituents, and even if I am wrong in that belief, I know for a fact that each and every one of you wants to get reelected. So please, so please, do what is best for the people of this city and enact a utility shut-off moratorium. Thank you for your time.
If, I don't know if Doug Brown has the information, but there is assistance at Fifth Street Renaissance, and so if someone's behind their bills, they need to contact Utility, CWLP, you can call the general number, 789-2000, if you want to come up, Doug, and tell them the options to access those funds. But when the state lifted the moratorium on utilities, you know, we're, we have our, we're our own provider of utilities, we created that fund to offer assistance, so they went through the process and started calling individuals that were behind. And so really, they need to call those resources that are available to them. You know, there's agencies out there that will help provide those resources. Doug, you want to talk about then Alderwoman DeSanto?
Well, yeah, so basically, you know, we've pretty much been for the last year trying to, you know, get that word out. I think we've done that pretty well. We've exhausted all of the funds that we've had, you know, for our residents. So, you know, calling our commercial office, you know, that's, that's the key. You know, talking to our customer representatives, they can direct you to all the different money that's out there that's available. You know, you know, there's, there's going to be new rounds coming, opening up for a fly heap. Like you said, Capital Township is another one, it's a great resource. And there's even some miscellaneous things that we've kind of more come across that we didn't know about even, so we're adding that to the information as well. That's possibly helped with maybe some sewer bills, there's possible help with water bills, possibly from a state fund that we just found out about. So we're trying to get all that information figured out and, and put on our website as well.
And I think in December, isn't it, we do not shut off in December? Is that correct?
Yes, when it's cold weather, we will, we won't shut off, so we're approaching that again.
And so, but it's important that people follow up, and what we will do, answer your question, Michael, is to take a look at that and what funding sources are available because with all the assistance, you know, it's a matter of coordinating it through the State of Illinois. I know they have resources, Capital Township and others, and it's a matter of making people aware of what's available to them. Alderwoman DeSanto?
I just wanted to address the vaccination rate. In Sangamon County, we're in the low 50s for fully vaccinated people. 61 or 2% of the state has received their first shot, so we're not, we're not anywhere near 65% as a state or as a county.
Okay. Is Kendra, I don't know if she wanted to address the council? If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, everyone, how's it going?
Good, thank you.
My name is Kendra Wade. My pronouns are she and her, and I'm in Alderwoman Purchases Ward 5. So, yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak at the Springfield City Council meeting. I'm very excited to be here. I want to start out by saying a lie heap is not enough. I come to you now in a time of crisis. As you have heard, or as you will, if you found out, last month alone, we had 570 electric utility shut-offs, 125 water utility shut-offs, and 532 gas shut-offs. That's 1,227 households, an estimated 3,117 people, your constituents, their families, their children. Adding to this crisis, as we all know, is the pandemic, and it looks like we'll be entering the third year of it. On Wednesday, the 10th, Illinois was at 5,044 new COVID cases due to Halloween, which was made worse by the caseload increase from the utility shut-offs. For 105 days, we've been above the seven-day average of 2,000 cases. There are graphs showing that two weeks after utility shut-offs occur, COVID cases rise. We must do something. Your people, your constituents are in crisis. The governor has the power to do something. City councils have the power to do something as well. In fact, we've already achieved 10 resolutions in six counties and four utility shut-off moratoria. You can do something too. You can pass a resolution calling on the governor to stop utility shut-offs via executive order and a passage of the Maintaining Essential Services Act of 2021. While you help us to call on the governor, Springfield can be one of those leading by example. The Capitol can pass a utility shut-off moratoria. It won't cost you any money. The Maintaining Essential Services Act of 2021, we provide funds and back to the utilities. Please, we urge you, if you need more information to pass a resolution, we can get it to you, and if you need, we can create a presentation. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Elizabeth Grappford.
Oh, Mayor, one more.
Oh, sorry, Alderwoman DeSanto.
Thank you. Alderman McMenamin just pointed out to me that our Sangamon County Department of Public Health says that we're at 57% vaccination rate, but the state says we're lower than that, so, numbers.
Right, thank you.
Good evening, nice to see you. I'm Elizabeth Grappford, I live in Ward 3, I work for the Sierra Club. I'm here this evening, I talked to Teresa Haley last night, she was hoping to join me, but she got stuck in another meeting. Alderwoman Conley, I heard you say we, no meetings for two weeks, and that's why I came, because I know on December 2nd, there's a special meeting about COLASH and the 845 rules that CWLP is having, and I have a couple of requests for those meetings. And one, Mayor, you could be carrying over to these meetings, which would be live streaming on Facebook. I, I think people miss that. But just an ask, just as a general practice for those meetings, that there would be a virtual option for people to engage because COVID numbers are high, we are in a pandemic, people should be staying home if they're high risk, and we should, regardless of a pandemic, be making, I'm shaking because I'm cold, sorry, be making avenues for folks who are disabled, for folks who are elderly or shut-in to be participating in our democracy fully. And then the other ask was just, I think I read that there will be presentations at that meeting. I'm hoping that there will be a chance for both question and answers as well as public comment. My understanding is this will be a first meeting, and then CWLP will come back and do a second meeting later on, but it would be great to be, to see an opportunity for dialogue at both of those meetings. That's all.
Okay.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Doug, if you'd like to come up and explain the process of the meeting, that'd be good. Would please? If it's been finalized.
Yeah, yes, you know, so basically, the, the regulations that require us to have basically two public meetings where they will, the public will be able to listen to the alternatives that are being presented for the closure of the Ash Pond. Essentially, it's, you know, closure in place, cap and close, or removal of all the material. So both options will be presented. So there'll be a presentation, and then there'll be a chance for everyone to ask questions afterwards in both meetings.
So it'll be a slideshow or something of that nature?
Yeah, there'll be a PowerPoint presentation, yeah.
Be serving popcorn.
Was it Alderman Hanauer, then Alderwoman Conley?
I, I would assume that you will have the cost broken down per household for these, what it would do to electric, electric, their electric rates or, or whatever, because obviously, we need to know the cost, people need to know the cost of them so that they understand that if we have to do total removal, you're looking at north of $100 million compared
It's about 145.
Huh?
145 million is the estimate.
Well, that's pretty far north of 100, so it's, yeah.
And then closure in place is eight, estimated 8 million.
Yeah, so we...
So it'd be...
I think, I think it's important that we make sure that the, the general public understands the, the cost associated, so...
Well, and, and, and not just the cost, but also what, what is the real impact to, you know, environmentally too? We'll, we'll discuss that as well, because what the goal is, is what's going to happen with the groundwater and the amount of time, and, and basically, we'll be able to show, you know, that there's not a lot of difference between the two, there's only about two years difference. So do you really want to spend that much more money? You know, that's, that's what we're going to be getting to, so...
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Yeah, hey Doug, don't go away. Thank you. So, so back to the question, is it possible for one or both of these meetings to be also either shared by Zoom or Facebook Live, or do you have that?
You know, we, we got to follow the regulations, so whatever the, our attorney, basically, that's working on it, whatever she says we got to do, that's what we'll do. The, because there is concern, I, I, I know the, the agency had some issues with that as well, when you're doing like a hybrid type thing, that there's, there's certain random, and we're, we're just limited on staff too, you know, to be able to manage the whole process with that, so, but we'll look into that and, and follow back, okay?
Well, actually, we're doing it like city council, you know, it'll be streamed at least in Channel 18 and...
Okay, that was my question.
It's here in the council chambers.
It's here in the council chambers.
Yeah, so it'll be the same way.
So, so it, so it will be in here, so it will be recorded, if people can at least watch it later?
Right, yep.
Okay.
And there'll be a comment period, I'm sure, where individuals could watch it online and then...
There's, there's not really a, a comment period, I don't think. It's, it's basically asking questions here. And there's another follow-up meeting too with the Illinois Police Control Board, I believe, they're, you know, they'll have that process as well. So, you know, basically, the comments can be submitted to them and, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, Doug. So what, what the EPA has set out right in the regulations is a baseline for what you have to offer. The city can always do more. Isn't that magical? You got a lead.
Right.
So lead, please.
That's why we, I think we're the only local government televised and streamed and everything else.
Yeah, just not back on Facebook yet. And, and I think you're the only municipality that will be partaking in the, in this rulemaking process for the 845 rules, which makes this special as well. The other thing I was going to say, you know, I P A tomorrow night is having a hearing. I asked for them to do it virtual, they said no the first time, and then they said yes, it will be on WebEx. So like, there are always ways to make accommodations. I understand sometimes it can be a little bit of a pain, but we need to make accommodations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council?
I wish to adjourn.
Here's one more, I think.
Hold on.
Oh, that's my girl, Miss White. Come on up.
If you'd state your name and the address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, my name is Simona White. I reside at 300 South Durkin Drive in Springfield, Illinois. I'm the state lead ambassador for the Federal Congressional District 13, and I am here on behalf of the Lites of Hope. We are number three in the United States. I would like to thank the City of Springfield, DSI, La Piazza, Wild Irish Rose, Murphy's Loft, HSHS is a part of DSI, the Medical District, they are our corporate sponsor, they did $25,000. And I just want you to know that the Lites of Hope is something that we do to memorialize those that we lost to cancer, those that are going through cancer, and for us to be number three in the United States is totally awesome. Not only that, congratulations, Lakeisha.
Thank you.
Yes. The House of Representatives, Chris Welch, my frat brother, we are the only state in the United States that has passed the biomarker bill, and we are leading the way. And I would just like to say thank you to Scott Dahl, Mary Langthozer, HSHS Hospital, Springfield Clinic Cancer Care Center, and to the citizens of Springfield that helped make us number three in the United States. And I'm not going to take up any more of your time. Two weeks from now, I will be back. You can sign this, I'm ready to go and get me a Pepsi.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Simona.
Motion for adjournment?
Come on.
Favor, say aye?
Aye.
Today, we're adjourned, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.